I'm going to call to order the June 17th meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission. Would you all please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance? Ms. Watson, Watkins Howie, I have a hard time with that hyphenated name. I apologize. Would you please call the roll?
Hello there. Chair Keeney.
Here.
Vice Chair Lepper.
Here.
Chair, sorry, Commissioner Stratton.
Here.
Commissioner Smith. Nope, and Commissioner Sylvester.
Right, and Commissioner Smith departed after an alert on the Bonanza Fire. So I'll just take a moment to, you know, express our concern and hope that, you know, this is brought to a safe and conclusion rapidly. I hope that all the firefighters stay out of harms way and we have minimal damage. But we will just have to wait and see. This is our first meeting with our new Development Services Director, Ms. Carol Kendrick. Want to officially welcome you. You've actually been with the City of Placerville now for several weeks, maybe a month?
Since May 12th.
Okay, so a little belated welcome from the Planning Commission, but we certainly are glad to have you.
Thank you, Chair Person and Commissioner. And I'd like to add for the record that Commissioner Sylvester is absent with previous notice.
Commissioner Sylvester is?
She provided previous notice of her absence, so I just would like to put that in the record.
Okay, that's what I remembered. So, all right. We do not have a closed session report this evening, so our next item is the adoption of the agenda. Can I have a motion to do so?
Move to adopt. Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
No opposed, thank you very much. Next is the consent calendar, and on our consent calendar, just the approval of the minutes of the regular Planning Commission meeting, May 6, 2025. All matters under the consent calendar are considered routine and will be enacted by general consent unless any commissioner requests a roll call vote or unless any member of the commission or staff or audience wishes to remove an item for discussion. Any concerns from commissioners or the audience? I did have, I would like to pull this item and just have a brief discussion. We had during that meeting a full discussion of an email from Andrew Painter. And, you know, our meeting minutes are usually tailored to just reflect, you know, the actions that we take. I wanted to get Ms. Kendrick's opinion or of whether we should make a note in the minutes that we did discuss that email from Andrew Painter. This would be under 10.1, the keeping of hoofed animals. We just, he had a question of, I guess procedural question, but we did talk about it for quite some time. Is it worth noting in the minutes? Or?
I did watch that meeting, and so my question would be, what have we done in the past when there's been a particular item that's been discussed at length? Do we, do we address that in the minutes? Or is it, it's just because it's available on a video recording, someone could go back and look at that? So I guess I'd like to know what we've done historically in the past. So, you know, maybe as you've approved minutes over time, what's your recollection?
Okay, you know, it did not affect our proceedings, but we did discuss it at length. Do either of you have concern about making a note in the minutes? Or do you think having it on the video, having it recorded is sufficient?
And the letter is part of the record as well.
Part of the record, mhm. And the letter, right, the letter itself is part of the record.
I think, sorry, as long as the, I don't think there's harm in putting it in since we note other public comments that were received. Maybe we could reference it as written comment, but I also think we could move forward with it just being part of the record and keep in mind going forward, you know, with our new staff, that if something feels relevant to add it, and if not, then it's in the record. So I think I could leave it as is for this one.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying, and I do value and appreciate that in the written notes. So I understand that.
All right, so you're, you're in favor of leaving the minutes as is? And so are you, Alyssa? All right, I'm fine with that. I did have one minor, minor correction. Where was it? And this got carried over from the, from another, there was a mistake in the, hold on, I have it written here, page 7, 2.1. Right, so page seven of nine, under 2.1, approval of CUP 24-07. The, it's, yeah, the number of the CUP is 24-07. And this was carried over from the conditions of approval, so, and so the mistake was made there. So I just wanted to make sure that we have it not '06, but '07, so it's accurate. So that's the only change then. I have a slight amendment for the minutes. Okay. So.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes as amended to correct, number one, on page 2.1, on page seven, to read CUP 24-07.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. All right. Moving on to number seven, items of interest to the public and public comment on non-agenda items. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the commission on any matter not on the agenda, and the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. State law prohibits the commission from acting on items not listed on the agenda except by special action of the Planning Commission under specified circumstances. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak to the Planning Commission on a non-agenda item? All right, seeing none, we'll move on to number eight, written communications on non-agenda items. We don't have any of those? Okay. And we don't have any presentations or educational workshops? So that takes us to environmental assessments, public hearings, item 10. First, for consideration, is 10.1, the Mackinaw Hotel 12-month extension. And I'll turn this over to you, Ms. Kendrick, for the staff report, please.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners, Carol Kendrick, Development Services Director, presenting this extension of time for the Mackinaw Hotel project, including a site plan review and two variances. On January 4, 2022, the Planning Commission approved the subject site plan review and variance request for the Mackinaw Hotel. The project includes the construction of a 112-room hotel, roadway improvements, and landscaping for the property located at 3001 Jacker Road? I, Jackway, okay, I've been saying it wrong, I'll get it.
I said it wrong as chair up here, so don't worry. Jakeway.
Jakeway, okay. Near the, now I'm off track. Near the intersection of Point View Drive and Highway 50 in eastern Placerville. The variance request allowed an increase in the building height and an increase in the allowable compact parking spaces. Under the site plan review provisions of the city code, approvals become null and void after 18 months of the date of approval unless a building permit has been obtained for any portion of the project. The Planning Commission may consider a request for a time extension if the request is filed prior to its expiration deadline. However, no case shall a site plan review approval be valid for a period exceeding five years from its original date of approval, which for this project would be January 4, 2027. The Planning Commission previously granted, considered and granted a request for a 12-month extension for the project on July 18, 2023, extending the deadline from July 5, 2023 to July 5, 2024. And on June 18 of last year, you extended the project expiration from July 5, 2024 to July 5, 2025. On April 1 of this year, a timely request was filed by the applicant requesting an extension of 12 months. Based on the correspondence with the city, following their request, the applicant provided a description of the need for the extension, including delays in consultant response times and financing. Their letter is attached to the staff report package, or their email, I apologize. No changes are proposed to the project. Additionally, there have been no changes to city codes except for the building code that would affect the project since the project approval in 2022. Project conditions, approved in 2022, would remain in, remain part of the project. Furthermore, the environmental analysis for the project adopted by the commission in 2022 would also remain in fact, in effect. This item was advertised in the Mountain Democrat on June 6, 2025, and the property owners within a radius of 300 feet were notified of this public hearing. Staff did not receive any public comments regarding this item. On a housekeeping note, staff is revising condition of approval number three to reflect the 2020 California Building Plumbing Mechanical and Fire Codes. Since the applicant has not filed any of those permits, they are subject to the updated codes. And at this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, adopt the staff report as part of the public record, and make the following findings identified in the staff report to support a 12-month extension of time for site plan review 21-03-E3, variance 21-01-E3, and variance 21-02-E3. This concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Go ahead.
Could you repeat the change in the conditions? I'm sorry, just give me a minute to catch up.
For condition number three, we're going to change 2019 to 2022.
Got it. Thank you.
All of my changes include numbers tonight.
That's totally fine. I just couldn't move fast enough. Okay, thank you.
They've been updated since 2019. Okay. Any other questions? I guess my only question was that, so we're approving an extension for a year, and it expires shortly thereafter. So, you know, it's quite possible that they would be back in a year for a six-month extension. But we're not allowed to do like an 18-month extension, or, and that's not what they're asking for. So I was just a little confused about the timing.
That was going to be my request, too, that we just look at doing a full 18-month and call it a day at the five years.
I can check that. I just was going off the request that was received, and again, I'm fairly new and I have no, no planning staff, so let me check. I knew that in previous jurisdictions that I've worked in, you could, the Planning Commission could do longer, and I thought that would be kind of strange to pay for and process a six-month extension. It's really not the best use of, of our resources or, you know, the applicant's time, so.
So given that we, we could continue this, and you could see if it would be possible to do an extension to January 4, 2027, if that's what the applicant would like? Is that?
I'm sure they would.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If you don't, I can pull up the code right now and just confirm, or we could continue.
I'm sorry?
We could, I could pull up the code right now if you don't mind waiting just a moment.
Okay. And, yeah, I can't imagine that they wouldn't prefer to go ahead and get that extension to have everything match up.
I thought the same about staff resources, time, applicant time resources for six months. It didn't seem, I think I would prefer not to continue it and to try and push through the 18 months and call it a day. Yeah, just because of the timeline, because then the next meeting will be really close to their deadline, the July date. So I'd prefer if we can to.
There's the argument, you know, we, we have got it in process, but if we can.
Totally, yeah. Yeah, if we can close it tonight, but with the 18 months is what I'd like. I'd like to not limit them to the 12 and have to bring it back in any way if possible. So, because I'm, I'm really in favor of the project and still very supportive of them, and they've been good. So that would be my, that was my same thought process.
Yeah, the financing has always been a problem for them. That's something they've cited on the, the other requests that they've submitted, and I know that, yeah, getting, yeah, getting financing is a little more difficult these days than it was at one time.
I'll just chime in to say that I agree with everything you guys are saying. I think I remember reading that you can only approve 12 months at a time, but hopeful.
That sounds pretty standard.
Yeah.
So I don't know, you know, about making an exception.
Yeah. Actually, maybe we could take a five-minute recess while I look.
Sure, let's, let's adjourn until.
The silence.
6:25? Is that plenty of time?
Yeah, that's plenty of time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for bearing with us, those of you in the audience.
We're not finding anything that specifically addresses the period that you can extend it. It just talks about the 24 months that you get after your original approval. So I, I don't know what the commission's pleasure is, is either to continue it, to have us dig a little deeper, or, or approve it with an 18-month extension at this point.
If we did, just on our own, do this 18-month, just name that date in this particular instance, then if a problem arises, it'll just come back to us. We will have already put it in, in force, but if city attorney or staff research shows that we were in error, you'll just have to bring it back to us to correct that action?
That's correct. And so I can actually bring some information back to you at our next meeting, doing some research. And it might be something where we want to address that in the zoning ordinance to where it's more clear. Typically, what I've seen in other jurisdictions is they spell out, you can apply for, you know, three one-year extensions, or you get three years, and, you know, the applicants would come in and request, you know, two years or one year, or whatever they needed.
To give them that. I, I just wanted to look at my calendar. Do you anticipate a meeting? I say, we are going to have a meeting on the 1st of July.
So on July 1, we had, I had three potential items. So one of them is bringing the bylaws back, but the city manager is actually taking a look at that, so we won't have it on July 1, but it definitely is on my radar. The second item is a zone change and general plan amendment, and now a conditional use permit for the old Thompson House, changing it back to residential zoning, residential land use designation, and then the conditional use permit for the conversion. However, the conditional use permit came in this week, or last week? Last week, and that was based on communications that I had early on with Mr. Painter, who had commented based on, you know, pending applications. So we did advertise that, the general plan and the zone change for our July 1 meeting, but we can't conduct the public hearing. I was going to recommend that we continue that off calendar, or continue that off calendar. We're going to have to re-advertise and put the conditional use permit in that notice. So we do have an advertised item.
And a fairly, yeah, fairly full agenda already for.
Well, we're not having the bylaws because the city manager is going to take a look at that. And then I did have another project that I anticipated bringing forward, but they're still incomplete and there haven't been any communications. So we actually have no items to discuss. So I can work with Deena on how we can notice that the item that was advertised will be re-advertised, and we can cancel that meeting because I don't have any other items besides that Cedar Ravine, but again, we're not going to discuss that.
And so I want to make sure that we're able to have a meeting, if we continue this, we could have a meeting before the current extension expires, or?
Typically.
The current one expires when?
It expires on July 5.
July 5.
But typically, if they have an application in, it's, and it's being processed, they, it won't expire. So they did submit on April 1, so they do have a timely filing.
Okay.
So I'm not necessarily concerned about having a continued meeting on July 15, because we, we do have documentation and records that they did pay the fees and submit their application prior to their expiration date.
All right. Well, then I'd like to make the motion that we continue this item until July 15. Sounds like that's our next meeting.
That is.
Yeah, okay. So that's my motion to continue this with the direction to staff to help answer this concern about setting a date of, to coincide with the expiration of the original approval, January 4, 2027. So, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alyssa. All in favor? Or any further discussion? All in favor? Aye? No opposed? Okay.
I'm going to vote no because I'd rather just vote on it now, but I also am in favor of, I get it, just out of principle, I'm voting.
I'm sorry, I, I, did I?
No, you didn't.
I didn't mean to cut off your discussion.
I'm totally in favor of it, but I, of continuing it. It's fine. I just vote, I'm just going to vote no, because I just, I just feel like voting no. I'd like to just offer the 18-month and call it a day, but I'm also totally understanding and comfortable with moving it forward.
I am curious if there is any sort of administrative option where we could say like not to exceed 18 months and then give you guys a discretion?
It can't exceed 18 months.
Well, yeah, right. But then that way, that, it comes back to you, and once you figure out if it can be 12 or 18, you can plop that in and be done.
That's probably something I'd want to run by the city attorney.
Sounds good. Yeah, no problem.
Okay.
Okay. Back to being an aye on her, her motion.
So I want to make sure I understand that the vote is 2, 1?
Yeah.
2, okay, 2, 1, all right. That was confusing. Okay, next up, we have item 10.2, the Varosa Cottage Bed and Breakfast Conditional Use Permit 25-02. And again, I'll turn this over to you, Ms. Kendrick, for the staff report.
Good evening again, Chair and Commissioners, Carol Kendrick, Development Services Director, presenting Conditional Use Permit 25-02 to operate a historic bed and breakfast in an existing 1,230 square foot single-family residence on a 3,920 square foot parcel zoned R16, which is 6,000 square foot, single-family residential located at 795 Chamberlain Street in the Chamberlain Historic District. Just want to provide you a little bit of background on this project. We did have a similar application filed by the applicant in 2021. It was approved by the Planning Commission on June 15 of 2021. However, an appeal was filed by a resident on June 21, 2021, citing concerns of loss of housing availability, housing availability without a full-time resident, allowing for on-street parking on a city-maintained road, and the pending short-term rental ordinance, which is now adopted. On July 13, 2021, the city council reversed the Planning Commission's approval on the project. So the applicant has returned, and this proposal does include establishing the bed and breakfast. It is a three-bedroom home, and it's known as the Varosa Home, constructed in 1916. Two of the bedrooms would be designated as guest rooms for overnight accommodations with a macumon. with a maximum occupancy of four adults. The owner's living quarters would be located on the lower floor of the residence when it is being occupied by guests. Subject property is zoned R16 with similar zoning to the East and West, R120 to the South, and Community Business District to the North. The general plan land use designation is medium-density residential, as are the properties to the East and South with low-density residential to the South and Commercial Business District to the North. The site is surrounded by residential uses with the exception of Placerville class located to the north. This project is consistent with general plan goal G, to preserve and enhance Placerville's historic heritage. The R16 zone provided for certain uses subject to a conditional use permit. And furthermore, Section 10-4-1112 states that bed and breakfast shall follow the procedures for a conditional use permit with specific development and operational standards. The staff report does detail the bed and breakfast criteria and analysis, including parking. Two spaces are provided on-site within the garage and driveway, one space at 792 Chamberlain, and one in front of the property on Chamberlain that allows street parking, which, street parking is not prohibited per Section 9-3-9 of the code. However, in our parking code, it does prohibit street parking. So I have talked with the applicant who's here today, and we can revise that street parking to the adjacent residence if necessary. With no street parking, so we'd have the two on-site and two at the adjacent property that's under the ownership of the property owner for the project. In addition, since the previous application, the property owner has lived on-site since 2023. She intends to only operate the bed and breakfast on the weekends as she does conduct her business over the phone. And I actually visited the site unsolicited, and you can hear things. So she will be occupying the owner's quarters, which are below, and they are, she has no intention of renting those out. It actually has very low ceilings. I'm kind of tall, and, you know, I was kind of getting a little scared. If I was wearing heels, it would have been a problem, but that's the intention. It's, the bottom living area is not intended for any rental use. This item was advertised in the Mountain Democrat on June 6th of 2025, and property owners were notified of this public hearing. Staff did not receive any public comments regarding this hearing, except for what was included in the packet. I did receive comments from the Planning Commissioner today, so we can go into that a little bit later. This project does meet the criteria for the application of a Class 1 existing facility categorical exemption under the SEQUA guidelines. And on a housekeeping note, condition number 9F needs to be changed to reflect the current CUP 25-002 and not the 2021 Conditional Use Permit. You know, planners, we like to recycle, so I apologize for that. Well, I'll try to do a better job in making sure that we get things up to date. So at this time, staff recommends that the Planning Commission hold a public hearing, approve Conditional Use Permit 25-02, subject to the modified conditions of approval, and direct staff to prepare a notice of exemption for the applicant to file with the Eldorado County Cook Requader. This concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, as I know some of you may have some questions. And we do have the applicant here tonight to answer questions as well.
Do either of you have questions for staff at this time?
I don't think right now.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Being that I am also new, I noticed in the bed and breakfast statute that there needs to be historical significance. Do we have a standard of what we use to define that?
No, it's just incumbent on the applicant to demonstrate that. And, you know, that's a good comment. In the previous application, I don't know if you went online to see that. There was much more information provided than was given in this particular application. So, but it, there is some, yeah, there is some description in her, yeah, in the material provided with this, but that's a good point. My questions, I think my main concern was addressed in your staff report, Ms. Kendrick, about that, let's see, it's condition of approval. We talk about the parking. Here we go, number nine. 9A.
Three?
Three. The one space shall be provided within the street right-of-way and directly in front of 795 Chamberlain Street and westerly of the Holmes driveway. So what you are saying is that we would, we would delete that and modify the conditions to say that two spaces shall be provided within the driveway and garage located on-site, and then two spaces shall be provided within the driveway of 791 Chamberlain? Is that, do I understand?
That is an option. And just to update the Planning Commission, last week, as I was trying to wrap up the staff report, typically is, you know, in crunch time, I start calling the applicant, and, you know, I start having more questions. I, again, it was unsolicited call, and I actually went out and visited the site last week. The applicant did indicate that they obtained a encroachment permit that day, and I did confirm with engineering today that they did receive that on June 9th. So they will be doing improvements along the front of this property, 791, and then the other neighboring property. But again, in talking with engineering, we don't have confirmation on what the right-of-way is. I mean, it is, you know, it's an older area, and so it's really difficult. And so we don't have any records, so it would require a surveyor. But in talking with engineering, they did not have any concerns at that point. But in order to move the project forward, if that's a concern, the applicant has agreed to provide two spaces at 791, if that's a concern in advancing her project.
Okay. All right, that, that does sound fair to me. My concern was the language in our parking ordinance, which says, let's see if I can get this right. So 10-4-4C1, required parking may not be located on any street right-of-way. And I did visit the site also, and I visit, I kind of know that area. I don't have a lot of occasions to go up there, but visited it when this application came before us years ago, and then this time. But to me, the street right-of-way and the public right-of-way, so, I'm sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. 10-4-4C1 says it may not be located on a street right-of-way, but the encroachment permit can be issued for something in the public right-of-way. In this instance, with such narrow streets, they're one in the same to, you know, for all intents and purposes. I don't know exactly where engineering could possibly draw a line or would draw a line, but, you know, reasonably speaking, the right-of-way is the street. There's not, there's no parking allowed on one side, and you're really up against the fence practically of this cottage as low as the other houses on Chamberlain. So I felt that we would be in error in conditioning this use by requiring an encroachment permit where there really isn't any room for engineering to do so properly. So, but you spoke with engineering?
I did. Like I said, the applicant has been successful in getting an encroachment permit issued. And when I talked with engineering today, they did indicate in Chapter 9, there are streets specifically listed that there are, there is no parking. And they indicated in this particular area, in front of the applicant's home and where the encroachment permits were applied for, is not an area that has restricted parking. So Chapter 9-3-9 does have Chamberlain Street identified, and it says on the north side of Chapel Street to a point 40 feet west of Chapel Street, on the north side of Lillian Court to the westerly terminus of Chamberlain Street, on the north side from Sacramento Street to Chapel Street, and on the south side from a point 200 feet west of Sacramento Street to a point 360 feet west of Sacramento Street. And the last one is on the south side from Sacramento Street to a point 50 feet west of Sacramento Street. So I did notice when I went out there last week, there is some no-parking signs in two locations across the street from this particular property. So this is kind of a unique situation. So in the zoning code and the definitions, a bed and breakfast is defined as a residence. But our bed and breakfast ordinance does require parking because it does increase the need for parking. However, it's hard to grow parking, especially when you're in a historic neighborhood. And it might be something that we want to look at if street parking is allowed. So we do have, like I said, we do have a chapter that identifies where parking is not allowed on the street. So like I said, that might be something that we want to look at in the future, but this is complicated as well.
Right. And I noticed those signs on the, on Chamberlain across from the cottage. So they are posted at certain intervals prohibiting parking on that side, but nothing on the same side as the cottage. The other concern I had was then C5, talking about the maximum grade that's allowed for these parking stalls, and there's a maximum grade of 10%. And it looks steep to me, I have no idea. So that was a concern for me, having, people who are new to the area. I have a steep driveway, so when you buy a house, it's kind of, you know, that's, however that got approved when the house was built, it exists. But we're getting a new use for this particular property. So, you know, I'm trying to respect the specifications in our parking ordinance. So was engineering able, or were you able to get any information on what that grade is down from Chamberlain down to the garage itself?
I don't have that information. That's something that I can follow up on. But I know that the applicant just recently had that driveway redone and indicated that they did kind of soften it out on the bottom to accommodate a ping-pong table. So I know that the grade's kind of changed, but I don't, I don't know what the grade is. That is something that I can confirm, or maybe the applicant has information, or can reach out to her contractor, or maybe she can text him right now.
Right. So in a moment, we'll, yeah, we'll get to that as we proceed. This also goes on to say that if the grade's over 5%, the required width of the parking stall shall increase to 10 feet. But according to what I could see on the diagram, it says that it's 12 for, at a certain point. That's on page two of the applicant's submittal. This is Attachment 1. So on the second page, the diagram shows that it's 12 feet wide at one point. Then my last concern about that is, so on page two of the submittal, there's a line drawing, so you'll, you can see that it says that it's 12 feet for approximately 29 feet, and that takes you to the front of the garage itself. And when I drove by, I noticed that the garage has a, you know, it's a cute door, but it is a little small, and I don't know what the width of that is and how hard it would be to get a car in and out of the actual garage. So the specification is that for two spots in tandem alongside the house, we would need 18 feet, 18 feet total, two 12-by, I'm sorry, two 12-by-18-foot-long spots there in tandem. So that means 36 feet. So we're somewhat short of what's required for tandem parking over there, unless we can be sure that the garage actually does open up to 12 feet to allow a house.
In the staff report, the reported is 12 feet width and 20 feet in depth.
Right, but what I'm wondering about is the opening. And you can see on our diagram, I think they kind of show that there is a door that's...
I drove by too, so I'm familiar with the door that you're, it was a quick drive-by. But I know what you're talking about, that I saw it was kind of a classic garage door looking, so.
Right. And so you've got the house, and then you've got a wall on the other opposite side. So I'm very concerned about having sufficient depth off of Chamberlain for the two cars there. And I think those are my questions, and I appreciate, Ms. Kendrick, for you doing all the research to talk to engineering and find out as much as you could about this particular site. So I believe that those were, those were my questions about parking, excuse me. I could just, I am also a little concerned about the definition of what a B&amp;B is supposed to be. Our code needs to be updated. I could not find the specific definition. It was created in Ordinance 1710 that was passed in 2022, and I think it's just a matter of some, yeah, bookkeeping. But a B&amp;B, the definition, any residence provides guest rooms without individual kitchens for paying guests, transient lodging facility where owners reside on-site. B&amp;Bs shall be established subject to Condition, Conditional Use Permit in conformance with Section 10-411. So the language in this definition from Ordinance 1710, I guess I'm just very concerned about the owner moving from one level then down to the basement when there are other occupants on-site. And I'm just a little confused as to what's going on in the two properties and how they're interlinked. So those are questions that I actually will have for the applicant. I'm sure she can answer them. But just wanted to get my concerns out there so you two can also be thinking about them. Go ahead.
I also just wanted to note a concern I had with the tandem parking requirements in our code. It noted that it must be, it can only be approved within the downtown parking district, which I'm not entirely sure where that is, but also only for employees. So I don't know that, you know, how much we...
Okay, so where did you read that?
It's 10-4-4C10.
If all the conditions, okay. Downtown parking district designated, okay. You know, I read that, and somehow I thought it didn't apply somehow to this, in this instance.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
Yeah, I noted that spaces have to be paved per city standards, and for some reason, that didn't click with me, that this tandem parking might not even be allowed.
Even though it's stated in the 10-411 Bed and Breakfast Ordinance that tandem parking is allowed explicitly in number three, 10-411, the Bed and Breakfast zoning ordinance. It's, number three is tandem parking is allowed. However, not more than two cars per tandem space shall be allowed.
Okay, so they overrode that parking?
Yes, which that's what I, like, I think we're getting to, is this ordinance and all of the other ones are a little bit, a little tricky, and I think that's going to...
Right, so the parking ordinance likely predates the B&amp;B ordinance, so they address that concern. Okay. Thank you. Sharp eyes, okay. Good. Any other questions at this time?
No.
Okay. I'd like to ask you to come up to the podium, and if you would like to give us more information about your project, or we can just kind of jump into our questions. Welcome. Ms. Slater, right?
Yes, Danielle.
Danielle.
Yes, thank you.
Good to see you.
Thank you, you too. Shall I just read a little?
If you had a presentation, if there's something you wanted to tell us, you know... If you had a presentation, if there's something you wanted to tell us, you know, I don't want to preempt that, so just go ahead. You know we have questions.
Okay, great. All right. First off, thank you for the opportunity for the Verosa Cottage to be considered for a conditional use permit for a historic bed and breakfast. In nineteen oh eight, Josephine Verosa purchased the cottage for one thousand and fifty dollars in gold coin. Since that was the first home I ever purchased on my own, I found that very fun that Josephine, not Giacomo, purchased the land. Given that time in our country, that's a very fun fact for me. I absolutely consider myself a steward of that cottage and everything I do around it. My goal is to share and carry on the spirit of Josephine and Giacomo. I don't know if you have a picture of them in your, okay, good. I enjoy imagining that they might be pleased with all the improvements and the possibilities for this cottage. And the reason I believe that is that the picture of the two of them enclosed is special to me, not only because it captures a moment in history, but they're actually standing on the kitchen porch, as indicated by the woodwork. And unlike most historical photos that I've seen, it actually shows them in what looks like a very funny spirited conversation. And I believe Josephine's expression is priceless to me. And if the city approves that the Verosa Cottage can be part of what this special city has to offer, the guests will be welcomed into a home filled with local art on the walls, local wine from our country's, our county's vineyards, cheese from Dedrick's and cookies and other sweets from the local shops for them to enjoy. Everything will be tastefully noted as to where these items come from, and in order to encourage the guests to visit their establishments and to enjoy more of their offerings. There will also be a welcome binder that lists many of the activities and links to other sites, more sites and activities in our wonderful city and great county that has to offer. I have owned and loved on this home for over seven years, and I've lived there full-time for two and a half years since January twenty twenty-three. I am confident that my neighbors who own, one neighbor owns both the homes directly across from me, as well as my neighbors directly to the left, would happily verify my full-time residency. I own the house to the right of me, which I call the bungalow. I call seven nine five the cottage. So seven nine one is the greenhouse to the right. The neighbors on our street talk about how blessed we feel to live on such a special street filled with friendly and thoughtful neighbors that put care into their homes and into each other. Across the street from the Verosa Cottage, down, so directly across, is the no parking sign in front of the Peachley's front steps. And it goes up to the curve, up to the curve to the right if you're walking out of the cottage. And so that space, because when there's something parked, whether it's the garb, you know, construction city, whatever, you can't put two, two cars can't go past. So that area, I assume, is why, because it's only a one pass while someone's parked in that section, front facing right. From the front of the cottage, directly across from my gate, is the steps that go up to my across-the-street neighbor. From that point down to forty-nine is all free, open space. It's open all the time except for if we have some, you know, ladies' night or the car show. That's the only time that anybody takes up that space. And it's the equivalent of two properties with no home front in front of that area. So that's across the street.
There's no, the street gets somewhat wider down there, and there's...
It does. It gets wide pretty quickly. Yeah, right past the Peachley's, it goes out and dips out. And so when people have guests, everybody just, you know, we all go down there. And that's, like I said, with the exception of, you know, Christmas parade, ladies' night, car show, I mean, it's empty over there. So I actually park across the street over there a lot of times because it's fun for me, because when I go over to the neighbor's house and look back at the houses, I think it's fun for them, you know, just to see both the cottages and not see the cars. So I tend to park over on that side most of the time anyway. I, so, the neighbors, okay, sorry, across the street from the Verosa Cottage, down to Chamberlain, down to the corner of Chamberlain and Highway forty-nine, is completely open public street parking, and there's no home front there. They're the sides of those two houses. So there's abundant spaces for the cottage that has a maximum occupancy of two cars. However, the seven ninety-five cottage driveway, plus the two parking spaces in front of my cottage, as well as the driveway in seven ninety-one bungalow to my right that I own, that parks three easily. Altogether, it accommodates six cars just between my property and the encroachment in front, you know, where I park naturally, even if there was no street parking available abundantly across the street and down to the corner. I hope that you choose to approve the Verosa Cottage to be an example of our history of grit, charm, adventure, and hospitality, and as an absolute contributor to our economic vitality and, you know, continually supporting the success of our local small businesses on Main Street and within Eldota County. Thank you.
Thank you. And before I forget, I want to congratulate you on the terrific job that you've done on the remodel. All the photos that you provided in your packet show that a lot of attention to detail, and you've updated the interior, but the exterior, you preserved that, that look, that historic look. And so I want to congratulate you on a job well done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that. And your pride of ownership definitely shows.
I love the place.
One question I have, so using this as a B and B, seven ninety-five as a B and B, is linked to, your ownership of seven ninety-one. So, and you're telling us that you reside in seven ninety-five?
I reside in the cottage, yes.
And so what's happening with seven ninety-one?
So seven ninety-one now, it, I, my husband is, I recently got married, and my husband, it's kind of like a male house and a female house, and I'm there all the time over in my house, and he's got his workshop over there. And so it's, it's only twelve hundred square feet, so the extra space is welcomed. So, but all my stuff is over there, and it's a wonderful setup.
Both of you are occupying both structures.
Yeah, since together we're a hundred and twenty years old, we have, we don't have a ton of stuff. We minimize and minimize, and we love our surroundings, but it's nice to have two for our own spaces. But, yeah, I live, that's where I live. I mean, it's where I work, it's where I live, all my personal items. I have no personal property next door. I like my little space, so, yeah.
Do you have an intention of renting out seven ninety-one?
I did actually for up until six months ago. From the very beginning, when I remodeled it, bought them both on the same day, and just how, as God would have it. And I remodeled that place, and I immediately found somebody who, just a beautiful coincidence, and they were retired pastors, and they lived in that house until he passed away six months ago. And so she moved in with, we got her set up, she's moved with her, sorry.
Take your time. Take a moment.
They were like grandparents.
While you compose yourself, I'm just going to interject then that since you, at this time, are essentially in both houses, that's why it is not too much of a burden for you to provide additional parking there at seven ninety-one. So two spots over there and two spots at seven ninety-five. So that's, you and Ms. Kendrick discussed this, and so that's doable for you.
Yes. And so just to finish up, yes, so I rented it for six years until two months ago when, after he had passed, she moved into her, one of her son's homes. And so I decided, and at the same time had, been in a relationship and said, I'm not renting it anymore. I couldn't ask for better renters, and it was, it was fun.
And of course, you're aware of the condition that should you sell one property, you know, then it all, it all goes away, you know?
Oh, totally. And last time, I never said anything because it was all in, on the discussion, I was new to the whole thing, and I wish I would have said, I totally understand if it's conditional. I have no intention of selling it. I love both my cottages. I love leaving something after I'm gone that's better than what, how I found it. So I'm very proud of it. But I would imagine if that's part of it, where the parking comes from next door, if I ever were to sell it, which there's zero plans, then it would make it null and void if it was pending on it.
Right.
That would be fair.
Okay.
There's plenty, but it's, I get it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Okay. Do you have some questions?
No. You, yeah.
And Alyssa, do you have any specific questions?
No, I think actually, yeah, we covered everything that I have.
Between, yeah, my interrogation and Ms. Slater's description of the project, I think, yeah, all of our concerns. Let's see, I want to just flip through my notes here.
Yeah, just, one of my questions was, who's occupied it since 2021 when this happened? Now, you've clarified that you've been there since 2023. I believe in the appeal, you acknowledged, in the city council appeal hearing I watched, you acknowledged knowing that the seven nine one, if it goes away, it goes away. So I appreciate that being consistent. And then, yeah, I think the parking was my big, my big thing, and I think we'll probably needle that down. But otherwise, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Looking through my other notes, I was also concerned about this required-to-occupy statement in our, you know, conditions of approval. And it's, it's much, much different than what we see with other B and Bs, and certainly with the Airbnb model that I think everybody's grown familiar with, where there's nobody onsite at all. What you're doing right now, either you're in that small house, seven ninety-five, or you're just over at seven ninety-one, or you moved down into that room downstairs.
I would stay there because it's my asset, it's my home, it's, as you can see from the interior, that I care very much about it, but I also want to share it. I really think it adds so much charm and value to the city to have that. And the apartment is adorable. I love going down there. It's, I think, I think you have pictures.
We do have pictures, and I, you know, I'm...
It's adorable.
I'm nearly six feet tall. I kind of looked, I thought, you know, this is, this is not for me. However, I think you're a little shorter in stature than I. So it works for you.
I can, yes, I can jump for joy. It's, I, I'm, yeah, it's adorable.
And the reason I'm concerned is that, you know, we issue a conditional use permit, and that runs with, runs with the land. It stays there as long as all the other criteria are met.
Right.
So we've talked about that. You understand that if you sell one or the other, then that dissolves it, or parking stopper, and so on. But anyway, I just want to make sure that we are addressing all the requirements under our different ordinances. And I think, you know, I agreed with one argument when your previous approval was appealed. That was a concern I had of losing housing stock. But what I'm hearing now is that you're actually, you know, you occupy this as opposed to this being an Airbnb. It is actually a house, and I think that that meets, meets the spirit of the B and B ordinance, to have somebody onsite at all times so that problems don't arise, and also that, so that we're not taking viable housing stock away from, you know, the general population. Okay.
Good with her.
Please, anything else you'd like to say? If not, you know, please just take a seat.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah. Would anyone from the audience care to address the planning commission? I see someone's back there. But you don't have to come up and say anything. I just wanted to let you know that this is your opportunity to speak about the project.
I wanted to circle back.
I'll please step up to the microphone, if you would. And if you would, give us your name.
Seth Custis. Wanted to circle back to the other Mackinac Hotel.
Oh, well, let's see. We decided to continue that item until the fifteenth, and so it's not, I can't really allow you to speak about it at this time, but just be aware that we will be bringing it back up. And if you have a concern...
Comment on that?
What's that?
I think we might have skipped public comment now that I think about it.
Well, since we continued it, yeah. Let's, you're providing your, right. I was just going to suggest that perhaps you could talk to city staff about concerns you have about that, since we've already closed that public hearing. We did continue it until the fifteenth of July.
All right. Thank you.
Okay. Let's finish up this, and then maybe we'll take a break and talk about how to deal with that. Okay. Okay, so no more public comments, so I'm going to close the public portion of this hearing, bring it back to planning commission for discussion and possible action. I'll say that, you know, I am cognizant of the concern of taking, you know, housing stock out for people, because housing is tight right now, and it is expensive. But I think what we see here, and the conditions that we, we need to modify the conditions slightly based on our discussion tonight, I think we're, we're not taking, we're not making, making that problem worse, since this is occupied by Ms. Slater and her husband, so.
Yeah. I went back and watched the prior discussions and the appeals to get refreshed on everything, and I landed kind of, I think, where you did, where this house hits kind of a sweet spot of hitting the bed and breakfast establishment criteria. So while I can see how it kind of feels like it could be a short-term rental, which bed and breakfasts are, they're short-term rentals, but it's, I think Michael Friend said last time, all short-term rentals can't be a B and B, but all B and Bs are short-term rentals, right? And so I think that in this situation, she has met the criteria to be determined as a bed and breakfast and not as a short-term rental, to not be going back on our short-term rental ordinance that we came up with. And so, yes, I don't think it eliminates the housing stock. I do think she has presented the historical significance proof with the parking. I think that it's covered there. I'm still kind of in favor, and I don't know where we'll land on this, of the encroachment permit, just to be sure, because I suspect at some point someone will be parking on the street. I did do a site visit, like I said, before this meeting, actually, and there was a large truck parked in front, still space for another car right there. So I'm not too worried about, with the two, with the spots at seven nine one and seven nine five and an encroachment permit, that they will flow out of their allocated space. So I don't know where we, I kind of don't remember where we landed on the encroachment permit. But in general, I'm in favor of having that in place, just to be covered for the city being reimbursed for, for any additional parking that it brings. But like I said, I felt that she hit all of the points that are required. It's going to contribute to the city, it's going to provide more places to stay, which is also a challenge here. So, and again, it's not removing housing stock because the intention is not that we're taking a rental and turning it into this. It's a home with the capacity to do this. So the capacity is also there. I think it's proven that they can go downstairs. I have a friend who does that in another city, actually does go live on the property. It wouldn't be for me, but, you know, but I'm not saying that that's not an opportunity. So, yeah, I landed that, I wanted to clarify the parking, which I think you've done pretty well, and that she lives there, that it's, I believe I read a two-year permit, so, you know, there's, there is a timeline of review that comes up. And so I think there is the ability to manage for that. And I believe the encroachment permit is annual, too. So if there's a problem with that, then that would be reviewed. And, I'm trying to see all my chicken scratch, they... Yeah, so that's where I landed.
Okay.
I'm in agreement that a lot of my questions are answered today, and the parking was a major issue for me as well. I still have a preference that one of the four assigned spaces isn't on the street, just because noting the, like, limiting the guests to one car, you know, you never know who's going to show up and where do they go. And I know that the conditional use permit has language about selling the property, but if, in the future, there was ever a need to, like, rent the property out, for whatever reason, I know it's not your intent right now, but I'm just thinking about where would that person park if we...
Oh, the lower?
The, on the seven ninety-one, if there was ever a need to rent that out.
Well, in that case, the applicant would have to take absolute full-time residence downstairs, and in order to meet the criterion of having someone present.
I think you're, I think what she's saying is, like, when it was being rented, when she came for us in 2021, there was two people living there, and I think there's three spaces at seven ninety-one?
Three cars.
Three cars. And so she was saying, at least in the previous one, and I'm assuming that's still the case, is that there's three spaces there, so two would be...
is that there's three spaces there, so two would be occupied by the renter. And then that third one would be available to be considered for parking, say for the owner and say, on 791. But it would be like two spaces for 791 and one space for 795 located on 791. Do you see what I mean? So you would tandem park the two and then have her, say her car over at 791. And then there's still the one spot. And I don't know if the garage qualifies for that or if we still need the encroachment. And, and to be clear, this isn't a signed spot, right? So it's just saying that you're going to use some street parking. So it's not saying they can only park here because that was a point of contention in the last one. So this is just, from my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what made me okay with the encroachment permit is that it's just saying, I'm going to sometimes take up one spot on the road and I'm paying my dues for that and getting it legally, that I'm doing that in a commercial, commercial way. But not, it's not taking away parking from anyone. And like I said, I did a six o'clock, 5:45 drive-by when a lot of people are home from work and things, and it was not overly crowded. Like I said, there was a large truck parked in front of the house and still space. So, you know, if, I'm on Pacific, I would have a lot more issues with the parking on there because of the way that the street is. But the way that street is, I think is sufficient for us to allow for that to be one, not assigned, not leased, not exclusive, but just be utilized for that fourth one.
That's a good question. I'm going to ask Ms. Kendrick. So the encroachment permit, so that's just paying a, paying a fee to the city. And then it goes on record that one of the four spaces is through that, you know, encroachment process. But is Ms. Lepa correct? There won't be a sign this is for 795 only? Or how, how does the encroachment permit work practically speaking?
Unfortunately, I'm not familiar with that particular encroachment program. What I can do is get with engineering. I know that, that Ms. Slater did get an encroachment permit to improve between where the, the road kind of shoulders off between like the fences along the property. So she was making improvements there at her own cost. And so I'm not aware of the encroachment program where you kind of pay to play.
But I thought, you know, I want to make sure that we're correct.
I was thinking it was, when I interpreted, and like I said, I could be wrong on this and this could totally be the case, but that it was within a certain amount of distance. Maybe I'm interpreting this wrong, but that's.
I did see that it has to be like the available space needs to be within 300 feet of the property.
Yeah, that's what I interpreted as and that there is that available.
Right. And I don't think it's really a concern on the off chance that someone's parked there. Parking across the street is not that big a deal. And like you said, you know, these are limited time permits, so I'm not very, I'm not concerned.
Yeah, my concern with the encroachment permit is, you know, the ordinance says that they can't be issued for street right away. They can be issued for public right away. And, and you're much more familiar with encroachment permits for a construction, you know, something, it may be long-term, but it is considered, you know, temporary. So I, it's my preference to take that requirement away and instead say that there will be two pace, spaces at 795 and two spaces at 791 because the, this whole idea of the encroachment permit, because I have that question.
Yeah, that's what I said, maybe I interpreted it wrong.
And, you know, I can see a property owner, okay, I paid to have, and I'm, I'm going to, you know, that's for me and my, my guests. And no one else can park there. Is that what we want?
Yeah, and that's not how I interpret it. So maybe, like I said, it could have just been an error in my interpretation, but I interpreted it that she was kind of paying to have within the, I think it's 300 feet or something. You're, you're acknowledging that you may be taking up that space and paying for it. So I'm, but, but again, maybe it goes back to the least idea.
That's a deficiency in our, our information. We don't know how that actually plays out in the real world. So that's, that's why I, I'm glad that the staff and the applicant came to this agreement that two at each spots, two of each parcels.
And I'm totally happy with that because it does seem like there's sufficient parking. I was just.
And Ms. Slater, I'd like to ask you to come back up to the podium. I neglected to ask you about that garage. Do you use that to park a car?
Yeah, but I, I don't have any use to park the car in there.
I, I'm just saying that the access is there, so.
Yeah, I mean, it wouldn't be for my Bronco, but I mean, it's like, it's, but it, it was what it was when I got there and it's not something, yeah, it's a garage, but I mean.
And you probably have no idea how wide that opening is.
It's a garage. I mean, you can fit a car in there. I just don't prefer that. I mean, I like to hop out and walk in the house.
It's just that we are, you know, dedicating that space to your guests. So they need to be able to get their car. If we're saying you have to, you know, we're expecting you to park here and there, they have to be able to use that.
I've parked, I think tandem is nose to tail. Is that what you mean? Like, so I, we've parked two cars in there, you know, for like ladies night or whatever. I have guests and we go, we go tandem in the, in the parking lot or in the, in the driveway. But I, yeah, I mean, it's.
Okay, that, that answers my question. So the yes, that you have been able to successfully tandem park two cars there.
That's how we do the, the Christmas parade, the ladies night, the, yeah, it's, it's two, two, and then two.
You have to make every spot available.
Yeah, yeah, it all works out and, and the city parks up there and nobody get, I mean.
And since you're already doing that, I think you understand our concern about if you wanted to say, you know, parking for 795 only.
No, even if you gave me the right to do that. Yeah, no, even if you gave me the right to do that, I would never put up a sign like that. That doesn't make any sense to me. I don't own anything.
Okay. Thank you. I, please, sit down. I appreciate you coming back up and answering that question. I forgot to, to ask you when you were up the first time. Okay, I think we've, have we hashed everything out? Alyssa, you had one concern about the historic context for the home.
Oh, I wasn't actually concerned. I was just curious what the standards were so that I knew that I was applying it.
I thought that was a good question. And so I'll go back to staff on page four. Historic context, a criterion one, historic context for the home would appear met with the submittal and assembly of property ship owner, ownership information. You know, that, that information was not included in this particular packet. It was much more extensive in the original submittal back in 2021. There were a lot of documents, the deed, and, and so, you know, that's the evidence that one uses to say, yes, this is, this is a particularly historic, historically significant home. Not just, we don't rely on just the fact that it's within one of our historic districts. You know, when things have come before us, we have different ages and, and styles and so on. And so it's up to planning commission to kind of evaluate. This is, you know, pictures show that this is a very charming, old-style historic structure. So I just want to confirm with staff that you actually do have this information in the files about the house being built in 1916 and, and so on. Because what I'm thinking we should do is make it very clear that we're incorporating the staff report as part of the public record, since we don't have any other evidence before us tonight that verifies that.
The staff report is part of the public record. And then also incorporated by reference are the, is the previous conditional use permit. And I apologize, this application was in prior to me starting with the city. And again, with the constraints, trying to move that, this forward, we will definitely be more cognizant on, on making sure that we have more detailed information on historic natures of, of properties. But again, I.
Oh, I'm totally, yeah, yeah, right. This is a terrific job. I, I don't, you know, I have no problem with the work. I just want to make sure that we are covering our bases and, you know, the, because I, actually both of us saw the previous application. We know that the information's out there. However, you know, do we get to, how do we easily incorporate it tonight? So I think just by referring, make sure we incorporate the staff report.
The last page of your staff report, it does, I, so you'll see that I really like to document older cases or permit numbers. Just kind of in my career, I've had to do research on stuff that, you know, was supposed to happen 10 years previously. So my mantra is, can Carol 10 years from now figure out what happened? So you'll see that I, I will do a lot of references. I, I can certainly appreciate where the planning commission's coming from. I, I will look into the historical standards and maybe what, you know, what meets that criteria. And I will also look into the encroachment permit and kind of what was discussed tonight and bring information back to the planning commission so that we all understand what that process is and what that looks like for going forward.
Very good. Thank you. For, we're having a fairly open meeting. Ms. Slater, oh, before I have you come back up, did you have a comment?
Oh, first quickly, yeah, Ms. Slater, if you.
You have a question for Ms. Slater?
No. I noticed she raised her hand, so.
I'm going to let you go first. You know, usually when we close the public comment and bring it back, we're done, but we're doing it a little more open than tonight, but go ahead. No, okay. Ms. Slater, you, you had something to add?
I was just going to add, what is on microfiche? I can just give you some dates if, if that would be interesting for the historic.
I think we have.
You don't, okay, because I have, I had the order of who bought and when bought.
Oh, well, thank you very much for that offer.
Okay.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion. And this is the first time I am making a motion, so bear with me.
That's right. We're, nothing if not patient.
So I would like to move to approve conditional use permit 25-02, subject to the attached conditions of approval with the following changes. Under 9A2, change that to two spaces instead of one space and then strike 9A3. And then under 9BF, modify to CUP 25-02. And then under number 11, I just noted a typo in the third line, should say shall submit all necessary forms and documents. And direct staff to prepare a notice of exemption for the applicant to file with the Eldorado County Clerk Recorder's Office.
I will second.
And my only discussion is that there is a statement that we are, we're already incorporating the staff report as part of the public record. Was that?
Did they kind of stop that?
We stopped doing that.
Yeah.
And I, I'm trying to remember what, it was previous staff members' idea so that stopped being something we did every, for every.
I think Pierre stopped it when we were, he felt we were making changes to the information. And so they sort of pulled that. So I was staying away from it too.
Okay. So if I could offer a friendly amendment that.
I'm in favor of it, yeah.
Where can we do that? Hold on. Incorporate by reference in your motion.
I think it was easiest just at the beginning to adopt the staff report as part of the public record. I mean, it's more of a formality anyway, right? So I think.
Okay, so adopt staff report. Okay. All right. So that was my, my amendment?
Okay.
Accept.
I'll accept your amendment.
And I, I will accept with my second to add that. I, I like having that in there too.
Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Chair Lani?
Aye.
Commissioner Leder?
Aye.
And Commissioner Stratt?
Aye.
Okay. All right, this action is subject to a ten-day appeal to the Placerel City Council. However, I think we've made strong findings and your application this time is just so much different than previously. So hopefully you'll have success. And again, thank you so much for coming down here, spending time, answering all of our questions. And then, of course, the project itself providing a really nice place to stay in our, one of our charming historic districts. Have a good evening. Okay. So that concludes our environmental assessments and public hearings. I would like to take a five-minute recess at this time. If we could reconvene at 7:30.
At 7:30, I'm calling the meeting back to order. And we'll move on to, we have no continued items, we have no new business, so we'll move to item 13, Matters from Commissioners and Staff. We'll start with 13.1, Staff Reports, for staff to update those in attendance of the status of upcoming meetings and recent actions and so on. So I'll turn it over to staff at this point.
Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. I typically have something prepared, but I do have some notes. So the City Council has adopted the budget, it's actually going for formal adoption with all the documents for next Tuesday's meeting, but there are going to be changes to Development Services. We are freezing the Associate Planner position and our Code Enforcement Officer is going to be shared with the Police Department. So that position will be partially funded through AVA, which is the Vehicle Abatement. So our Code Officer will be located and supervised by the Police Department and will have limited, we won't have a full service Code Enforcement employee. So there will be some changes, we do have very limited resources. So we're going to be looking at ways that we can become more efficient. So I'll probably be, you know, bringing things forward and trying to see how we can work within the resources that we have. I know that, as I mentioned previously, the City Manager is looking at the bylaws and kind of what we can do to make sure that we keep everything moving, but also allow me to be able to work on the things that, you know, we'd need to update, like our safety element and implementing our housing element and doing things like that, like updating the sign code, which is definitely at the top of my list, and updating our fees. So I just wanted to give the Commission the information and let you know that we will, we will have some challenges. As I apologize for your packets weren't available a week in advance, by law, we are required to provide them 72 hours in advance. I'm going to do my best to provide them as early as I possibly can. But again, as I was trying to prep for today, you know, little fires here and there and trying to stay on top of things. I did want to let you know, as I mentioned previously, we do have a couple items for, we do have the Cedar Ravine project that will actually be doing the public hearing on July 15th, which is the Thompson House. And I will be bringing back updates regarding the encroachment permits and we'll look at the historical. I am definitely open to any suggestions that the Commission has on efficiencies and looking forward to working with all of you. I think I gave you guys my background, but if not, I'm happy to discuss my background. I am definitely new to Northern California as a resident, but I've been visiting up here since my daughter started at Sac State 12 years ago. And so I'm currently living in Rancho Cordova with my daughter and my son-in-law and my 18-month-old grandson. But if you have any questions for me or if you need anything, I am definitely a resource for you and hopefully we'll be able to rely on you as institutional knowledge for the city and as Planning Commissioners, but also as residents. I think it's important, but you know where to find me. Tell everyone you knew where to find me and I am available and you all have my personal number. So that's all I have at this point. I normally would have a more detailed, but again, time got away for me today and I apologize for that.
Well, thank you for the updates and yeah, I'm glad that we've got Code Enforcement in place, but yeah, I know the budget is tight, so it's not going to be, not going to be easy. And we all look forward to working with you too. I think we've all had a chance to meet and talk with you, so yeah, I'm really looking, looking forward to it. We have 3.21 under Planning Commission Matters. Before we get to that, so I don't forget, I'd like to preempt that with a request for staff and it's kind of based on my own experience. Over the years, we've had our, you mentioned the packets, that's what reminded me, and I don't want to forget to make this request, 72 hours in advance and they are available, physically available, well, they're online, of course, but available to us physically at the Carey House. And I had a lot of trouble getting my packet at the Carey House. I think because, you know, they've got only so much staff and they're upstairs taking care of their clients. I often wait or have to, there's a phone line that I can call and so I interrupt them and they come down and they're, you know, very nice. I don't mind standing there, but it's just, I think it would be more efficient for the Planning Commissioners to just come into City Hall and if we could have our packets waiting downstairs even, just, there's usually someone at that desk.
Right.
So we can pick those packets up. And if people haven't gotten their packets by maybe Friday, if somebody could run them over to the Carey House, because I know there's, there's all sorts of things that come up where people can't physically pick up their packets. So is this undoable?
That is definitely acceptable. What we can do is we will have them available and if something comes up, let me know. I mean, I, in a past life, I was a Planning Commission Secretary for Riverside County and I had to drive packets all over Riverside County, which is the second-largest county.
I want mine personally delivered.
Well, you know.
You live the closest.
I do, yes, I do.
Well, like I said, it depends on what time it is.
No, I'm just joking, but.
But, but we certainly want to work with you and make it easier and not burden our existing businesses. So the first floor is open. I know with the challenges to DSD coming up, we are talking about closing at lunch because, I mean, having basically myself, Deana, and our building official who has to go out in the field and do inspections, it's going to be almost impossible for us to have coverage and so those are things that I've been talking.
That's up in, on the second floor, right?
Yeah, the second floor, but yeah, so first floor is open for payments and so we can certainly leave stuff down there.
And do they close for lunch? I, you know, I just.
They don't, and I don't.
There's almost always someone there or within, you know.
Yeah, because, you know, they, we need to take the money in, so that's important. But yeah, we're, we're looking at, you know, a lot of changes to Development Services, so.
Okay, and then it would just be a quick check, you know, on Friday at whatever, when someone, last person's about to leave, if they haven't been picked up, then you could take them over to the Carey House for people who haven't been able to come into City Hall.
Right, or, I mean, I can reach out to the ones that haven't picked them up yet and just see what's going on.
Mm-hmm.
Again, it's, I don't want to burden our businesses and, you know, if we have to, if I have to hand a liver on a Friday night, that's, that's fine, you know, I'm.
Well, hopefully it won't come to that.
Yeah, but, you know, maybe I'll, you know, spend some money afterwards and, you know, visit one of, you know, your.
The online option is, is really quite workable, although I will say, well, in this instance, I picked up on things when I was looking at the diagrams, that's because I just have my laptop and so I'm not really good at blowing up and really keeping things in relation. And certainly when we have big, you know, plan sets, you really need to spread those out and take a good look at them. So for me, on the electronic version doesn't work as well, so, thank you.
I appreciate that. I'm very much a bleeder. I mean, I'm not a big paper person, but I am, and so when I'm reviewing stuff, I get the red pen and I, I have to see a document, so I can appreciate that. But certainly, like I said, I'll be giving you a call on Fridays if, if somebody hasn't picked up their packet and we'll make arrangements. So either, you know, through ever, you know, however we need to make it work.
And, you know, we have two Commissioners not present, so we will, you know, alert them to this change and make sure that it's still convenient for them. So we want to make sure that everybody, you know, has this access. So we'll move on to 13.2.1. Since I preempted, since, you know, do either of you have something that's not 13.2.1 that you'd like to discuss?
Nope.
Okay, so I'm going to kind of get organized back here and back to our agenda because I do want to at least touch on this item about the City Manager Memorandum summarizing City Council direction regarding historic preservation. Thank you for providing this information to us again, especially for our newest member, Alyssa, and of course Catherine will get back up to speed when she's available. But what I'd like to talk about with this, I know, Amy, you're very familiar with this and Alyssa, I get the sense that you're, you know, getting up to speed on this. I had drafted January 28th memo, this is Attachment 3 for item 13 2.1, and I had kind of summarized things that we as a Commission had discussed and proposed standard findings, so on page two of that memo, some standard findings. And this is just kind of based on, you know, my experience with the projects that have come before us. So this was dated the 28th, but we never have as a Commission, I've never gotten any feedback, so I would, I don't know if you had a chance to review it and take a look at it, but I would really like to have your comments tonight if you're prepared to discuss.
Sure, yes, I did have a chance to look over your memo and, you know, like you said, I am very new to this, but I am a policy wonk, so I'm happy to volunteer in whatever capacity is helpful to achieving what we're aiming for.
Okay. So do you have any specific comments about, you know, my proposed, having these kind of standard findings available to us should these projects come up? Do you think they make sense, meet the goals that were outlined in the City Manager's memo? So this is linked to our direction from City Council. Let's see, that was, I believe, given, written by Mr. Morris, summarizing, yeah, their direction. So I want to make sure that I'm, you know, hitting the mark and I understand what City Council is expecting of us and I want to know if this, if you find this helpful. Because Amy's done a lot of work on another part.
Other part, yeah, yeah, to be fair, I've not put my head to it, yes, and I love it, yeah.
You've been able to move yours way forward and you've been very successful, whereas I, I'm still kind of waiting to hear from other Commissioners if this is, you know, the direction we want to go.
Well, I certainly think they're a goal in the right direction. I don't have any, like, detailed feedback for you on them in terms of editing, but I also haven't taken the time to.
Okay.
Really noodle it as much. I, I have to admit, I didn't spend a lot of time on this topic for this preparation of this meeting. Just to say that I think they're fine, especially just rereading them now. I think that they, you know, hit what we're, like, looking for, but if you would like, I could read them more extensively or, or even go look and see if there's anything else that I see that should be incorporated. But, I mean, overall, I think they're a great start and I think that they convey, like, the consistent findings we're trying to find in, in the historic districts. So I think as a, as an initial, I have no issue, I take no issue with them, that's for sure, and, and think that they could serve as, as our standard boilerplate language for these projects until we decide something further.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's, thank you. I realize, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but.
No.
This is kind of where, I've been in a holding pattern, I, you know, when you took on the other work of the inventory itself, I stated that, you know, I would move this forward and, but I realized that I really couldn't until I heard back from other Commissioners if this is, if I'm even in the right direction. So it's, gives me some confidence that this is starting to address City Council's concern and our concerns too, so that we make, we treat all applicants fairly and the same. We, you know, it's tough what they're asking us to do with these SOI standards, I'm sure you have started to read them.
Right.
And there's, it's interpretation and so as much as, I think we struggle with the people who, I hate to bash engineers, but it's an easy example. When you're in engineering, you know, things work or they don't, it's black and white. And what we're doing here is, you know, it's just not that way. And in particular, Placerville, we don't have these homogenous, if you will, of big historic districts, they're all the same age and so you know exactly what you're dealing with when you say, you know, I'm in the historic district because it, in other jurisdictions, you, it's just more self-evident and, or in some jurisdictions, there's been a lot more work toward posting signage and, you know, the steps that the City of Placerville is just now starting to take, kind of based on, a lot on the work that you've done. So in the meantime, we still have to work with what's on the books and I did kind of tense up with this application for the B and B on Chamberlain because it's in the historic district and it's like, we, you know.
Right.
I feel a little bit more pressure to move forward.
I can make a commitment to dig around a little bit more on this side because I have kind of ignored this side of it, like you said, for other interests.
Oh, you've been way busy.
But, but this is important to me too because I do think the wording is important. If we can nail it and have it be permanent, love it. We don't have to go back and look at it again, which is my favorite thing. So, so how about if we can, I definitely can make the commitment to noodle around with these, make sure that I feel they're flushed out and sufficient for being permanent language going forward in order to get that rolling within the next couple of meetings.
Right, so we need to create a document as a Commission and then send that up to City Council for their approval. So, you know, we still have our work to do, but then it won't be official until we have, you know, their, their review and their comments. I know, Miss, I want to say something, but I just want to highlight Technical Brief 16, there's a link to it on page one under the SOI standards. I found that Technical Brief number 16, it's pretty recent, I think maybe even more recent than these updated standards that we were given. I'm not sure about that, but it's pretty new. I found that really clear and so I think it's worth giving that a quick review.
Yeah. I would like to commit to relooking at those two things before the next meeting and have a little.
And I would appreciate us just continuing to put this on our agenda, so as we have time as a Commission to discuss it, keep getting ideas and get toward crafting the next communication to the City Council on this. So, Ms. Kendrick, you had some.
We can absolutely do that and the other, the housekeeping item on this one, it has the date of February 4th for the meeting. Again, this was something that a previous planner prepared and just trying to bring this forward. As I'm getting caught up to date on things that have been hanging out there, we'll be bringing stuff forward, but again, we'll, I just had housekeeping items on all of them, so.
Right, you know, our priority is our applicants and so, you know, right, we have to make sure that all of that moves forward and this is, you know, this is just something that the Commission, other Commissioners, so we have Ms. Sylvester and Ms. Stratton who are new, but the previous Commission, you know, we committed to doing this and taking on this work, so. But it does have to take a backseat to, you know, the projects.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
And I understand, you know, I appreciate any help and insight that you can provide us, but I also appreciate that you have, and Deana too, you guys already have a big, you know, workload and so I don't want to burden you, but, you know, to the extent that you can advise us on this, fantastic. But this, this is something the Commission kind of, with that in mind, we took this on as our work, so.
Right, but if we can make things easier for the process down the road or make it more clear for, you know, people moving forward, I think that helps everybody and looking on, at ways that, you know, we can address issues. So I'm hoping to bring more things to where we can start doing housekeeping work on our zoning ordinance, like for instance, with the bed and breakfast, where it doesn't coincide, the bed and breakfast ordinance does not coincide with our zoning ordinance.
Right.
And so there's a lot of confusion there, but, but also, you know, tightening up our sign code and addressing signs that aren't really addressed but are, you know, being utilized on a daily basis. And so there's, there's a lot of work to be done and so my goal is how can we make this easier for both staff, the decision makers and, and the residents and applicants that are coming in? This, it's very important and so I'm hoping that we're going to be very busy, but processing applications, but also, you know, updating things. So again, we're more efficient, we're making it easier, it's easier for everyone, that's, that's my goal.
Right, I didn't.
Using my love language, Carol.
Now, I'm probably going to rely on the Planning Commission about historical districts and historical, just in general, that's one of the things that I had brought up during my interview, that's kind of a weak area for me. I, I'm from Southern California and we don't have a lot of old stuff there. My, the city that I still own a home in and my husband's living there with my, my animals, we're getting ready to sell it, but I, you know, we have buildings that are, you know, from the early 1900s and they're in not great shape and I think there really hasn't been a lot of value in historic preservation by property owners. And then also I worked for the City of Beaumont where we had Historic State Route 66 and we've lost a lot of, like, our historic values. So we've got, you know, our Historic Society that's very active, City Halls and, you know, the high school that was from 1906. So, you know, when I started, I had the gym that was being rented out and I could hear basketballs all day, but, but this is an area that I don't have a lot of experience in, so I'm looking to kind of take in this information and then also work with all of you on how, like I said, how we can kind of address historic preservation and, like I said, how we can make things easier and more efficient and, but also protect our resources. I don't know if you've watched the last few City Council meetings, but we've had a resident talking about the 1906 Bridge. So we've been, I went on a field trip with Cleve out there, so I was on top of it and then went down below, glad I was with Cleve. But we had Carl, who's now helping me part-time because I don't have any staff, doing research on that and, and so that's been fascinating. And we're, we're just kind of looking at different things, so I certainly want to drink in everything historic and this, this town is pretty amazing. I actually toured Ms. Slater's home, the attention to details inside too, and, and just driving up and down that street is beautiful and driving around, it's, the history here is absolute, absolutely amazing and, like I said, the Thompson House, as I'm doing the research on that, it's, it's fantastic. So I want to help you protect what we can and, like I said, kind of move forward together.
It's always, it's refreshing to hear, you know, your perspective, fresh eyes on our city, you know. I, I've been here long enough that, I don't say, I would never say I take it for granted, but, you know, it is, it's Placerville, I walk all these streets, I drive all these streets, you know, but there's always something that surprises me and it's, it's really nice to hear that, to hear your perspective.
Well, that's to say it too, is that just in the six years that I've been on the Planning Commission, we've made leads and bounds and I used to get a stomach ache every time a historic house would come onto the agenda because I knew it was going to be confusing or messy or anything. So I really think we've made a lot of progress on, on determining what our values are and now we'll make that progress on making sure that everyone is aware of that. So all that to say is that I, I've sort of been stalled on my work, but now that Samantha's in preschool, maybe I'll have some more, I'll have 12 hours a week to do whatever I want and so I really.
And all you want to do is Planning Commission.
You know what, I do, I really do love doing the historic stuff and I really would love to put my head in it more consistently and really work towards that informational website, including, you know, having just all of the information available to people, so. Excuse me. All that to say is that I've, I've still got my head in it, I know Alyssa's really interested in it, you've done an amazing job and I will recommit to the, the wording part and then keep going on my visualization of the future.
Fantastic, really good to hear. All right, if I can unvary my agenda, that is it then and it is 7:56. We stand adjourned until the 17th, is that right, of July? 15th of July.
Okay, good, there's no meeting on the first.
No, like I said, we do have the advertised item, but we'll put notices out and we'll put notices on the door that it's been, it'll be re-advertised.
Okay.
And they'll get the notice before that meeting because of the General Plan Amendment and the zone change, it does require a 20-day notice instead of the 10 days. So anyone who got a notice will know that we're, we're doing this on the 15th.
Okay, great. All right, have a good evening, everyone.